Hi, I'm David Gill. Consider it byword for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So David Gill and Melissa Snappson, and I got the short straw, so here we go. Let's see, Charlie, you're first on the agenda.
I'm just here to follow up on my presentation for the renewal from two weeks ago, last meeting, I think, so wanted to see if there were any questions, whether we're to proceed with renewing the policies as presented.
Do you have any questions?
The community center, will it be taken off after closing?
When Brandy or someone tells me closing has happened, it'll come off. And we do have one 2025 pickup that I found out about at that meeting.
We got one, Doug.
With the dump bed, and I have all the information from Brandy and Doug now, so it'll have to be added, which it wasn't figured in, but...
Well, there's no questions, I entertain a motion.
Thank you very much. I will need signatures from David Brown to finalize this, so I'll get those to Brandy.
Thank you. Jackie, Jackie, I know everybody here, I don't think she hears me either. Okay, Wesler, Mary, hello, we have Josh and Eddie from Wesler.
Way back here or in the front?
Well, I don't know, maybe you're not in here much better. Do you have handouts?
I do have, um...
These copies of the proposal?
Okay, you can hand some of those out to the folks, we have a board member here in the back, Tommy Waltsit, so give him one. Incoming, he tries to get up to speed till he's running when he gets in here next month. So yeah, just a brief introduction, spoken from Wesler, we asked them to look into some INI study towards, we've done it before, we did it, gosh, back, started over a decade ago, and stuck to the point, why are you were doing it is because IBM wants us to do it, and we need to honestly stop the influence of our plants as much as we can, and why process stormwater, we don't have to need the, so we need to address it and make our system look tighter, so they, I hear from today, where's that told?
So we met back in November, got a feel for Rockville's system, and where your pain points are, two of the things that really suck out the most were the Virginia Holler lift station and the Bill Brown or Shell, as I was saying, reports, those two lift stations, from what we've gathered, when it rains, they immediately overflow. That's kind of the inflow problem of the inflow infiltration INI, the stuff that's really getting in there quick, it ramps up quick, goes down quick, but it does overload the system quite a bit, to where, you know, having potential for sanitary sewer overflows, and every time you have that, I then get involved, you have to report it, not fun for anybody. So what we're proposing to do is really focus in, you know, at least for now, on the, on those two lift stations, subbasins, do smoke testing, smoke testing is probably the quickest way to determine where your leaks are, where all the inflow infiltration is getting in, we take a, it's like a one motor engine with a fan blade on it, set on a manhole when we pump liquid smoke through that, the liquid vaporizes on the coil, sends it on the sewer system, and the theory is where you see smoke is where, is where water is getting in, so kind of doing, doing some of that in those two subbasins, there's about 40,000 feet total, and then along with that, do the manhole inspections for those two subbasins, make sure there's nothing obviously wrong with the manholes that could be letting everything in, especially at Virginia Holler lift station where, or that sub basin where it kind of falls, falls along the creek, you know, every, every so often we get INI problems that it's just one major thing, the manhole inspections, the smoke testing will really rule that out. Timing wise, when you're, when you're doing smoke testing, you really want to, you really want it to be dry so you can find the infiltration, based on what we've, what we've heard, what we've read, sounds like there's a lot more inflow problems than there is infiltration, do the smoke testing now or in the spring would find those inflow sources pretty quick, but you can certainly wait until summer, let it dry out a little bit, and see where the infiltrations come from, it's kind of, you know, whatever your guys' timeline is. I feel like you'd find quite a bit with the inflow, the inflow sources doing smoke testing now or in spring, that's part of it, the other part of the INI study is doing weather inspections, getting out here, especially when we know there's a big rain event coming, and just finding the bad out here, tracking sources of INI, taking a look at the lift stations, taking a look down at the treatment plant, you know, trying to find out where this is coming from, what's really being impacted, seeing it firsthand during a rainfall event, and then with that, you know, writing a report, summarizing our findings, logging all of this into a GIS system, which I'll get to in a second, and then providing recommendations, you know, there's probably a lot of stuff that the town can do themselves, there's some stuff that you need to hire a specialty contractor, you know, we can kind of identify those things, break them out for you, however you want it, however you want those recommendations presented, that's what we'll do, so summarizing everything, providing recommendations, logging into GIS, and that's the INI study. Kind of with that, but separate, the wet weather flow equalization basin down to the treatment plant, we're going to look at that, evaluate it, investigate it, look at its capacity, condition, just kind of how it works, you know, for our recommendations, I know that I D M's getting more and more strict about them, for our recommendations, making sure that they're up to I D M standards, right now, I'm sure your grandfather's been there, everything's fine, but it sounds like it's got the attention of I D M, so better look at it, just make sure it's doing what it's supposed to, make sure there's nothing wrong with it, so you guys can keep utilizing it, and you know, get it clear with I D M, and utilize it to the extent of its capacity. So that's another, another portion, and then the third portion is getting the GIS data, or GIS system setup database, we use Esri, ArcGIS, kind of, our GIS manager says it's a gold standard, you know, there's other companies out there, but Esri's very user-friendly, I've yet to see the limits on what it can do, I always talk to our GIS manager, hey, can you do this for me, and I think I'm asking out of left field, and he said, yeah, no problem, and we'll get it. If you're not familiar with GIS, it's probably the easiest way to put it, it's like Google Maps for your utilities, you log everything in there, store all your data in there, and you can go in and add stuff, you can add pictures, information if something was repaired or replaced, instead of trying to find the post-it note from 20 years ago, you pull it up, and it's right there, okay, that repair was, was 12 inch PVC on whatever date it was, this is how deep it is, and you have pictures associated with that. Along with setting up the GIS, we're going to, all the manholes that we don't map from the manhole inspections, we're going to map all of that, so at the end of the day, the entire, the entire wastewater system of Rockville will be mapped, nice clean map, you know, labels on there, however you guys want the labels, probably try to stick to what you currently have, just because you have videos associated with that, I'm sure, from other projects, repairs from other projects, so just getting that cleaned up, getting into a user-friendly database, so that, you know, you guys can use it. I brought this iPad, we run a lot of our stuff on iPads, and it's just really easy to, so you can see your entire, this is Franklin, Indiana, but you can see your entire system in there, click on a manhole, and it's got all your information in there, you know, you can add whatever you want, you know, whether it's adding repairs or just making notes, but it's all right here, you can get it on the computer, you can do it on a laptop, kind of the opportunities are endless with GIS. And then part of our proposal also includes, you know, we have listed 32 hours of training, our GIS manager get whoever, anybody, whoever up to speed, 32 hours doesn't sound like what, but he's very efficient at getting, getting everybody up to speed pretty quick, can do things over teams, you know, whoever you want trained up on it, he's happy to do that, so. With the GIS system through Esri, ArcGIS, it is $700 a year just to maintain that license, but, you know, it's not as much compared to, compared to others, and, you know, we can help you out as much or as little as you need, and with the GIS, you can use it for, you know, same thing, as much or as little as you need, it's kind of what you want to make with it, but you have all that information. That's kind of my...
That's your presentation?
My presentation, any questions?
Well, just thought, you know, we've talked about the GIS in previous meetings, and you were here, and Brent dug in on it, you know, we've talked about GIS for years here at Town of Rockville, and we just struggled to get it implemented, and haven't gotten it started, but, you know, the first thing, we have to have someone that is willing to take on that task, and my first thought was Tim, so, you know, as long as we have someone that dedicated, that takes the training that you folks offer, makes it further needed, but it's pointless to invest in unless we're going to actually assign the duty to someone, and if that's what you're doing, but I think we'd be an official for the town if we start finally implementing GIS, it's all I had to do, you know, you can talk about it here on our two different professional services, and we have some flow monitoring devices out there now, right, and I think they, 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 they monitor hours, they run, right, explain it to, I can't...
Yeah, like our wash dogs out on the lift station, they'll monitor the time the pumps run.
Okay, yeah.
There's other programs we can, you know, call and get started.
Yeah, we have that data, but we've not done anything with it, and that's something I suppose you folks could make sense of and put it to length in terms, okay, yeah. Anyone else have some questions?
Yeah, I've got several, so, over the years, I mean, as a town, we've not paid the engineering firms to do GIS maps and keep them up for us over the years, but as we've had engineering firms over the years do projects for us, as a standard, most of our most GIS data are linked, so, I mean, you've got this list of things, and I mean, paper stuff, I mean, have you looked or seen the previous, oh, we had INI and smoke testing in 2014, I mean, I've got it here, have you looked at that, is that to be incorporated in this as part of the project, or is it simply, you're going to have a framework, and then we are responsible to get that included in that?
So we can incorporate whatever you want, if you have any shake files from previous projects, those can all get...
What is a shake file, is this you?
It's like the GIS version of, just like, I don't want to say database, because that's something different, but it's GIS data that gets pulled in, line work, I know it doesn't include pictures, but it's just kind of that file that gets them for them, if you have any of those from previous projects, we can pull those in, we did look at the 2014 smoke testing data, there weren't as many issues from that report that would explain how these two lift stations are getting blown out every time it rains, I noticed that they do, or that they did back in 2014, which was fairly common at the time, just using the smoke bombs and blowing it in, and you get, you know, a whisp of smoke here and there, when we do smoke testing, we get calls from the fire department, everybody knows we're doing it, it's, it's safe, non-toxic for everybody, but we make it, we make it known that we're doing it, so we can find a lot more than just, just a little whisk here and there, you know, we really pump it full, it, it's safe for homes, safe for your sewer, it's not going to blow anything out, but, you know, we really pump it full, on those details, so.
So if the scope of this, if the only two areas that you run actively, looking at Virginia Holler, and finding the 3641 lift station, is that the only two things, or are you going to look at those, I mean, there's other suspected, either known or suspected problems, now, some of them have been corrected over the years for some of the street projects, some of them have never been addressed, I mean, are those involved in this thing?
So we, we discussed, you know, it'd be great to do the whole town at once, but maybe phase it out, and do the two more immediate concerns, those subbasins first.
Yeah, Steve, we, we thought we'd go with our biggest, most active lift stations.
Yeah, I'm just trying to stand, I mean, I, you know, like...
It'd be nice to do the whole town, but I...
Well, I mean, the top two or threes, it's fine, it's correct.
We just go just for that.
Are we pretty well convinced that those are the two biggest areas, that we don't have other, you know, one other area, sort of sexual area, there's a lot of, you know, just sort of runoff all around, school systems and all that, and we don't think we have?
One okay.
You know, we, or are you fairly confident that those are our top two infiltration areas, or is there another area we need to look at?
Those two lift stations are by far...
Another problem.
Well, I mean, soon as it starts raining, those two lift stations, within minutes, are going up and flow, it's obvious, and there was, I will say this, in the last smoke test, there was a few times it got into the basement, and they were shut after, so they didn't get to inspect.
The basement of the house, you mean?
Yeah, it got into the house, one lady came out, her mom had cancer, they shut everything down, so they actually didn't get to inspect that area, because, and there was a couple areas like that, so some areas actually didn't get inspected, I think probably should have, you know, so.
All right, we can do, we can do the whole town, you know, it's one of our wheelhouse that's...
Sure you can.
Right, and that, you know, that's kind of the point, try to keep this minimal, try to...
It's just to ensure that our two targets are the, are the two targets that should, that's the whole purpose of this question.
I would feel pretty confident if we could test those two areas well, we'll find some, yeah, pretty big infiltration areas that will help tremendously, and 36 lift, we don't, it rains, there's not a lot coming in yet, and Strawberry Road, it doesn't mean get high flow, but we're obviously not picking it up, it's summer after that, to Bill Brown's, where really, really, those two pumps are running.
But, you know, we're getting Holler lift station since everything's runs down, Holler runoff in the town, there's a significant amount ends up in Virginia Holler, this could be quite a bit upstream.
Yeah, Mike D said it does run through the creek, so it is obviously in its play, so.
Well, Eddie, Steve, what else, listen, okay, anybody, who, who, you never know, so, yeah, well, how about, the board members, and...
I think he covered all the questions I have, okay, well, I, I, we, uh...
I think I would go more across the main, the first person we've got, and...
Well, we can, we can wait until next meeting to proceed, you can, I emailed, I'll take a copy today, but...
And I'll get you, I'll get everybody my card, if you have any questions, you know, sleep on, I didn't show up today expecting anything, we signed kind of more of a, you know, introduction of what, what we're looking at, introduction of the agreement, please take your time, you know, we're, we're on your schedule, we're not on a huge rush, you know, want to help you out, but you know, want to be on your terms, so, I'll get everybody before we leave, give you my card, if you have any questions, call me, email me, I'd be more happy to answer.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah.
Eddie? Well, I think that'd be more your case along with Lee. They'll be back in September, if not, okay, where are we at here, folks? We are here, yeah, Lowden Graves, hello again.
Hey, hello again. Am I going again?
Go ahead.
Greg Gray in Kansas, 407 Anderson Street, we were here or came tonight again because we thought there might be some further discussion about Anderson Street now that I think the construction company is done for this year in just spring, I am assuming that.
It appears, yeah, I think, yeah, we're back there.
For the most part, I think, I'm pretty well... Okay, and we've talked to so many people about so many different things on what's going to happen next, we didn't know if there could be some clarification on what's upcoming for our property next spring, I guess.
Well, the latest, or the, all I know, is one left, the last left in the conversation, I, I was involved in, is the next spring, we're going there and do some kind of concrete work up to your existing town, we both drive, and try and do that grade, it's a little hot, I guess, in how to say it.
Okay, I dropped off the driveway design to the town.
I understand, that was my next question.
Okay. I can't, okay. Brandy wants to give you one... He had a plan of the driveway, and I was going to ask if I could pick up a copy or purchase a copy or whatever it takes.
So why was he only asked to do it for one driveway?
I mean, good luck, guys.
No, Brian just wanted it for his, because his was steep, hers was basically pretty flat.
The Lowden driveway should be, I mean, pretty basic for the concrete guys, the Lowden driveway added a pitch point in it, so it's steeper at the beginning, and flatter at the end, if he has concern with the RV, Parkin's thought that should make it a little less aggressive for the RV.
Okay.
Hers will be...
Are the engineers part of you, Mark, that, that's...
I just, I want to make sure that something's going to be done in the spring, and both of them are going to be done, I mean, we're going two people out there that this impacts anyway, so one thing tonight, that Dave had told me when he came to this meeting, that he was going to talk to the board about the landscaping around my mailbox, and that the inlet, what do you call it?
Door inlet.
Door inlet, that just stops, you know, part of the driveway, he said he was going to bring it up before the board to see if there could be some kind of landscaping done around there, around the mailbox, and kind of include that in it, so that it doesn't look so out there.
So it doesn't stand out too much.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, that, I'm sure the board will entertain it, to do something there to make it more appealing to the community and to you specifically, but we wanted to look at it, and so, you know, as spring gets here, we'll, we'll be out there, I'm not sure, we'll be there, we'll have someone.
They'll be back next spring.
Obviously, this time of year, they can't, it's great.
Right, but I was really happy to see they got the derby in, you know, kind of make it look normal, if that's the word to use.
Do you know if it's going to be seeded or sodden?
I don't.
It'll be seeded in the spring, unfortunately, right now, I mean, there's...
Yeah, well, I just, I just... Which one it was going to be?
No, it'll be seeded.
So it'll be spring before we get there.
And this is something that we can count on, oh, yeah, well, we'll get it, we'll get it, because I've got a list of things that we were told, and that didn't happen, we're told about this, that didn't happen, we're told this, that didn't happen, so I just want to make sure.
Well, to your benefit, we're on camera tonight.
Oh, okay, well, you made a motion last time on camera, and then you changed it out there on Anderson Street.
Well, once we got out there and looked at it, faced up, you know, had our eyes on it, yeah, the options really aren't very good, there's not many there, I mean, just given the rate of the room, and where your house sits and your drives, it's just not a lot we can do.
You know, we, we both feel like it's too bad, I mean, this is hindsight, and it's always easier, but there could have been something done, left ours alone, and go the other direction to level things out or whatever needed to be done, dig out the road if you had to, you know, well, even you made a comment at the end of the meeting about tear out the whole south, end of the south side of the curving, you know, you said, I've got, I mean, it was on the tape, that that needed to be done, I mean, we didn't get any kind of input on anything, no one told us anything, we knew absolutely nothing, I think when a town does a project like this, they really need to send somebody around, I felt like we weren't told anything because we would have a problem with it, so you didn't want to tell us.
No, and I, I don't appreciate that, that's something, just like you assume the Doc Swain guy's sweetheart deal, because I'm on the board, it's an impression I have, which in reality, because in doc code, the commercial properties don't have curving, I didn't know, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, I...
I didn't necessarily think that, I just wondered why.
I guess coming back in our conversation, like, geez.
I just wondered why his was different than ours, why couldn't, why couldn't we have that, we'd be happy with everything.
For some reason, NDOT does that, but, 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 you know, back to the whole, the whole project, you know, we're just board members here, it's not our full-time job, you know, we have a project, we have a design, I mean, you guys, well, I'd say, say to assume you knew it was, something was going to be happening.
I didn't know anything was going to happen on my side of the street, I signed that, I signed that easement, when Cindy Todd called, and I said, I told her on the phone, she said, I'm going, there's this easement, will you sign it, I said, yeah, nothing's going to happen on my side of the street, I don't mind signing it, honestly, that's what I said to her, and she never said anything, either she didn't know, or she didn't want to say anything.
No, I think a lot of us don't understand, you can't picture like what it had to still look like until you start putting these infrastructure in, and then you see, oh, wow, that's how it's going to look.
I think the only way to break that, I think, he would walk out and talk to them, and, you know, that's the only way to find out what's going on.
It's public meeting every two weeks, and these projects, this thing's been going on for two years, trying to get something done there, we were, I don't know what I was telling, nothing was done to try to keep you in the dark, it was, it was just all, this is a project that was designed based on the geographic situation out there, but yes, next spring, we will get done what we said we're going to do, and you come in and let us know, we're not doing something that we said we're going to do, okay?
Okay.
Okay, have a good Christmas. Okay, where are we at here, uh, Brandy?
My total claims are 554, 956, MP8.
Okay.
Looking through there if there's any questions, and we've got our light purchase car from IMPA for 180,000, probably the biggest.
So that Stark, that, or is it Stark Street, that sidewalk curb removal, is that for that, that was on Stark property, on 87 down there, pretty monster, that's what they took out of the old?
That's the one that you just gave me that I wasn't, I don't know where that... That's the one that you just gave me that I wasn't, I don't know where that-
Yeah, they sent to me from John Stack.
The model, so, it was the twenty, I think it's a twenty-four one, growing up on that. So, and that was, yeah, sidewalk and curb removal for community crossings, that one.
Well?
Uh, that was a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I don't see anything, uh-
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye. Um, and then my resolution, we'll just run through those pretty quickly, but Park and I have been discussing kind of some cleanup of some items. Um, they're all listed on the, um, agenda for dollar amounts. But we do have, um, American Rescue funds to our OCA grant, uh, water is what I've called it. Um, basically that was the SLRF and a compliance report, so that's where those funds come from. So there's a transfer of the five sixteen through sixty-four, sixty-seven on that. Um, we are moving, uh, two eighty-six, three ninety-two, twenty-nine from the water improvement to the OCA grant, covering that. We're also moving seven eighty-five, one seventy-eight, thirty-one from water operating to the OCA. And there was an equal split between water, wastewater and light operating to clean up the Jefferson and Work project there. So there's a several different resolutions there that I'll get numbered and scanned and email those all to you before any of those checks are cut.
A motion?
Yep. Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye. Um, and moving forward, I'll go ahead and jump down to UMAC Troy. They had a project come up today and he wasn't sure he would get away and find, but, um, we do have our UMAC, um, agreements for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Um, the language in those all remains the same, there is a slight increase, um, based on several things really, but, um, pay scale, supplies, increased costs, materials. So that for the, uh, the first one is the water for a monthly amount of four thou, four thousand seven twenty-five. And then our wastewater renewal agreement will be eight thousand three sixty. I'll make your motion, please, please.
All in favor? Aye.
I'll save a few seconds for those. That's all I have, go ahead.
Well, Bill, you're next up. All right, police department, uh, AC Electric still has some electrical to do, very minimal. Uh, we have, uh, the air circulates in and out of the evidence room, just pulling it, pull air, we're gonna, uh, heat that so that we're not getting cold air coming in on this cold days and that's gonna finish the door lock. We need to get our decals put on the doors. And, uh, our grant update, I applied for some test kits, uh, that should be approved on December thirtieth. Kind of technicality, we went, I went to the meeting on the sixteenth and they didn't have something, uh, advertised, so, well, they said they'll approve it on the thirtieth.
Okay. Been pretty peaceful out there?
Fairly.
So I say you had expensive tip of the spear auto repair or something, or is that?
That was the Pavo.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Who we have next? Doug?
First of all, I'd like to thank the board, I think you guys had a wonderful dinner. Randy for the time you put in to make that happen. And Jeff and Randy did a fantastic job.
Yes, he did.
And just food, so I'd like to thank you, the guys enjoyed it. Also, I'd like to thank Main Street, they, uh, they fed the guys pizza last Wednesday, thanking them for all the snowplains and all the lights they've done. So I do appreciate Main Street, they're an act for my guys, they're hanging, another, they're not going to pass any through, so. So the guys have been busy, we started a, a manhole and storm grate inspection. Uh, Dave and John's been going out popping all the manholes, uh, fitting information on how much flow, what needs cleaned out, jetted. And then the storm grates, we've been, uh, trying to make the list of any that need repaired or replaced and everything. So they've been working on that. Um, straight lights, we did an inspection on them, down forty-one, at this time right now, we have fifteen possible ones that need to be removed. And everything, so they'll be getting on that as soon as possible.
So you think you, your contact for, for the aluminum pole, think we can get something by the end of the week?
Yeah, I'm hoping to get something by the end of the week.
Okay, good.
I was gonna, I was gonna have, uh, Brett, one that, that deals with him the most, I was gonna have him reach out maybe tomorrow. Just kind of put a budget there that we need this as soon as possible.
Okay.
And everything, so hopefully, then the maps in the old building, I had a couple of guys working on them, going through that. We got a bunch of them moved up here to the back of the building, uh, this building here. They've done a new water service in four oh six South Jefferson Street, which means digging across the road and everything. Moved the water meter up, it was inside a house toward the back, went through the driveway. So we decided to get it out by the road where it heats and upgrade all that. And, uh, we had some guys go out to the water plant, the generators are up and running. We had a little walkthrough or kind of a, uh, real quick, just how they operate and what we need to do and all that. And so, and then the depot had some, a earl that had broken, we had bought parts and repaired it. So, so that's just a little bit of what they've been doing. And, uh, we'll continue that, we're gonna continue with tree trimming, uh, the straight lights repair and removal. The guys, the water department's been working really hard and we're gonna continue labeling and moving inventory from the old building back up here. So everything will be easy, inventory numbers will all be there, what's supposed to be there. And then our, uh, water supply guy can just show up, if we're not there, he can kind of do a quick run-through and say he does need five of these, four of these, and we don't always have to be there to meet him when we're busy. So we're then working on that, make things easier and, um, and then they just, they'll continue day-to, day-to-day operations. And I will have, uh, we've been working on, I'll have a list for you, uh, email, hopefully next couple of weeks, a list of goals we'd like to accomplish the first three or four months of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
After that, I'll, I'll keep kind of updating along where we're at and continue through the year so we know what we're doing and where our plans are and everything. So, um, Friday at one thirty, uh, we'll be meeting out here at Market and High Street to do the final walkthrough on Market Street.
Oh, okay.
That's this Friday. Skata system will be, Skata system, I'm sorry, will be installed this Thursday. Uh, the water plant exhaust fan will be installed Wednesday. And, and so that should pretty much-
Close that.
Close that project up, I believe, and then we'll have to do a final walkthrough on it. And that should end that project, which is where Randy's ready for that. So, uh, the other thing, I've got a couple purchases here, but the other thing I'd like to discuss real quick is, um, Dave Mariel, he'll retire on February first and everything, so that'll open up the position. So I'd like to go ahead and get that advertised as soon as possible. I'd like to have interviews going quickly and, uh, try to have somebody right around February, first of February, ready to go. And everything, Bill, Bill, I, Bill'll work everywhere and learn the whole town, but their primary position, I'd like for him to learn the cemetery, the computer work and all that with Mark, you know.
Those primary positions will be-
I, I like for, especially in the summertime.
Right.
So he can learn the system, learn to locate, learn with the computer system and all that.
Why, that's important, yeah, to, 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 uh, bring that up first. Uh, still have to know how to use, learn how or go how.
Yes, yes, just get her all that and the maps, and then they come up here, there's bookwork up here too.
The backup, right?
Yeah, 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 they'll have to do it all. I mean, so it'll be somebody that's interested in that work. Obviously, like now, Mark, uh, not a lot going on there to clean up paperwork and services. He did mostly digging on the water, they couldn't be moving up here and putting up here doing things with us. So, and that guy will do the same as long as there's no funerals, flames, trash to pick up, they'll be, so they'll have to learn the whole system. The primary, we need somebody that can take over in, you know, three or four years when Mark decides it.
Well, I would say start advertising them.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll come up with something, I'll give it to Randy and make sure that he sounds good. The primary, like I said, I'd like for the cemetery, and I appreciate that, something that's very important, we gotta have something, you know what? The other thing I have is, uh, the electric department needs some more supplies, uh, you know, just tape connectors and all this stuff. Uh, the total on that is four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents.
I made your motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
And then, I don't know, this one here is kind of a, a while back, this is the fly banners. Did that ever get paid or do you need, does that need to be approved? I know we approved it a long time ago, ahead and given.
Yeah, I think we're good on this, I just don't know that I've seen an actual, so I'm gonna take care of this.
I just want to double check. Um, and I believe that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Okay. Oh, just gonna bring up the generator, you didn't keep everybody, uh, keep it fresh in their mind. We, we, uh, hopefully by next meeting, what are we waiting on? What are we waiting on? Just to hear back and inform maybe?
Amber will be here this week, Mike Adams will contact me, it might be sometime this week. I said I'll pass it on to you, if you'd like to send it on.
Well, are you gonna share with him these recent, uh, I mean, basically they're all the same, it's just different names, we, uh, 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 what is it, we have a Gillette, we have a Geria, Geria, you know?
Generat.
Generat, what's the other brand?
Um, well, Blue Star.
Well, that would, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
He has switched back to, he did send me an email, I thought I'd pass it on to you, but I did. His, uh, the generator through Houston is now going to be a Cummings.
Okay.
Because it's the same thing, everything specs the same, it's just lead times a lot shorter.
Yeah, um, yeah, just for everyone's, uh, knowledge, I mean, basically I am saying we need around three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in generators. Um, offer, sure. So something to look forward to in, uh, next, next year. There's one portable unit and two fixing this down at the sewer, but, and, and Doug, you might, when you get with Jim at the fire station, they have a generator there and he sent me an explanation or told me about that generator a while back in email. They had some problems, company came out and worked, it's never been the same, it's not at the capacity of what it was originally installed.
Yeah.
I can't tell you the specifics, but, you know, we might as well have, find out from Jim and see what-
Okay, yeah, I'll get touch with Jim, uh, in the morning.
Oh, yeah, uh, okay, I think we're at the, we're at- Old business, any old business? No, Nick, nothing?
No, you got each for the park board on the new business.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Oh, let's get the new business. Do you have it?
Um, I have it.
Oh, okay.
It was just a, I mean, I can speak as, Chris and Ian, uh, which have, uh, changing the time on it. So instead of having set times, this one says, uh, I think, I, my recollection, recollection is thirty minutes after dusk or gone and thirty minutes after dusk is the time that you can do the park unless you have prior approval from the town. So like ball games and, you know, swimming pool, things like that would be very popular then. But I, I think our previous one had specific times and what the time changes. Right, so with the time changes and things like that that have been going on, it probably should update, so. Maybe I'll have someone to get there and stuff.
Well. All in favor?
Otherwise it's identical, you could be swaying, okay?
Is this same day, same meeting?
Yeah, yeah, so you'll find twice. And Randy has to publish it all.
So that original park board, is that a legal claim or not?
The town has final state on anything in the park board that is sort of, uh, so.
Well, I, I realize that, because it's a public involvement, that, is it? Something's not super time sensitive, it's just kind of good, like, they're involved and committed.
If you can, you don't have to do that, I just asked for America to see me.
Well, I, I don't know. We, uh, we need to re, re, revisit someday with Ken's posting, uh.
Essentially it's at, what, ten o'clock right now?
Yeah.
So if somebody's down there right now at ten o'clock at night in the middle of winter, we can't, can't tell them to leave.
But I mean, I mean, part of the thing, just as a public citizen, I mean, from time to time, both in my whole life and as a child, I mean, occasionally you would walk through, it's well lit, it's a place to walk at night and just because you're down there doesn't mean it's, you know, fairytale.
Point, yeah.
I mean, you know, so I, I mean, that's part of the reason, I'm not, and that's just part of the reason to have that discussion about utilizing your facilities and utilize physical, emotional health, but yet public safety, and so it's-
Right.
You know, it solves a problem of the time zone, which I get, but, but isn't what's good for the community. And so that's why you have comments, and just, and public has a sense of not being involved and that's at least an opportunity to develop the public. The only reason why you're on the board, I'm not.
Well, yes, the park board wants to review that and bring it back, that's, that's part of it. Um, any more neat business? Good. Guys? Public, anybody?
So does that mean if you're having a final walkthrough, they're gonna get the, on South Park, they're gonna get those erosion compulsions about what, fissures and hours?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
They've been down there for a while and, and they're-
They can't, you got that thing out of the sidewalk yet?
Yes.
Oh, good, place a board?
I believe so. Yeah, I think we got four down there.
Yeah, it's, it's finally, yeah. All right, poles, those are just replacing the poles or are they having to do the, the lights and the, like?
On forty-one?
Yeah.
Everything has to be replaced, we're going to aluminum pole and that thing crosses over. The light loads, Mike, I have to double check, arms, methane dose replaces, we'll put them, they change them. Yeah, so it's the complete.
Oh, is it L and E B or?
Yes.
Well. Okay, well.
I'll make my motion, please, John.
All in favor?